Okay, everybody, let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley?
Here.
Vice President Hedlund?
Here.
Trustee McNally?
Here.
Trustee Parr?
Here.
And Trustee Clements?
Here. Okay, thanks for coming to our meeting tonight. It's nice to see some faces in the audience. The first thing I'd like to do is just let everyone know our meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 15th at 7:00 PM, right here, room 211. Mr. Allen Walther and Ms. Kylene Fitzick of the Benadia Group will give a presentation on the Haldane's External Audit Report for 2018-2019. I also want to remind people that this coming Friday is the Haldane School Foundation's Fall Fundraiser. It's always a really good time, and they do a lot of great work for our students, so hopefully we'll see some people there. And our student advisor is not currently here, but we are happy that Andrew Nishamkin will be joining us. This will be his second year with us. We've always found it really helpful to have a student representative, and we're happy Andrew will be back with us. I don't know if he's coming maybe later. I'm sure he's at like three different rehearsals and practices right now.
Right. We can plan on him being here in the future.
Right. Great. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Benate.
Okay. I'd like to welcome our board members and members of the community who've joined us this evening. I just want to pass out this packet of information for our board members' reference. So John, if you wouldn't mind taking one and passing down, Jen, the same, as I may be referencing these items as I discuss the first topic on the agenda. So since we last met, we found ourselves immersed in a lot of activity regarding fundraising. And as you may have read about or read from me in communications, that there were some concerns regarding a certain fundraiser that was, or a specific fundraiser that was scheduled to occur by our football team or Football Association prior to homecoming, which I determined we should cancel prior to that. So it was covered in the local papers, and I wanted to provide a brief overview of that matter for our board and answer any questions that you may have. Obviously, Mr. Salem is also available this evening to answer questions that our board members may have. So just a few notes, and I'll be referring to some slides up here. As we've looked into this in February of this year, a representative from Chick-fil-A proposed a fundraising opportunity to football coaches at a Section 1 meeting. This is a meeting not necessarily facilitated by Section 1, as much as the coaches who are involved in coaching football across Section 1 have a time that they meet, and this was something that came up on their agenda at one of those meetings. Our football coach and athletic director discussed the fundraiser, and it was initially approved to occur at the homecoming game scheduled to occur on September 20th. Just a note in the packet that I provided you, the first letter there is an email between the owner of the Chick-fil-A establishment as well as members of our community, so internal folks, regarding the scope of the fundraising activity that was being proposed, as well as the, a rough outline of how it would be facilitated, because I think there were some questions regarding that and the involvement, or who was involved. This pretty much outlines that. The one thing this letter does not clarify, but that Coach McConville has, is that the gist of the fundraiser was that the company was going to provide a certain number of chicken sandwiches to be sold at the game, initially with all the proceeds going towards the team, but as you can read in the email, with the intention of developing a relationship so additional items could be purchased for future games at a reduced rate, and then sold again with the proceeds going towards the team. You'll also make note towards the bottom under next steps, the owner here, "I'd like to review a third-party fundraising sales document with you," and then we can begin to strategize logistics. That's the third paragraph from the top. Again, this email just came to my attention within the last couple of days, but it essentially outlines the gist of the fundraising opportunity and how it was presented to the coaches. The athletic director and school principal brought the fundraiser to my attention on September 18th. That was about, I believe that was the Wednesday prior to the game. The game was scheduled to occur on a Friday. Upon review, I advised the athletic director, I advised Chris, to cancel the fundraising activity. I had concerns about commercial activity on school grounds, advertising on school grounds, and the potential disruption to the community. Included in your packet is the board policy regarding advertising on school grounds. There's also the commissioner's regulation regarding commercial activity on school grounds. I also included fundraising policy that went through a revision a couple of years ago under Dr. Bowers' leadership, with a cover memo attached to that that I think is relevant and that we may be talking about in the next few minutes. So that's the gist of what occurred. Certainly, we can get into as much or as little detail about that and my decision regarding this as you would like. I think I already cited for you the two board policies that I think are relevant, as well as the commissioner's regulation. What the issue is also brought out to light, or brought to light, excuse me, is a matter regarding bank accounts and organizations that hold bank accounts with the Haldane name associated to it. The Blue Devil Booster Club oversees several bank accounts. That should be noted. No issues there. These include accounts for any team that does not have an association attached to it, and this is a unique wrinkle. We also have several teams that have their own unique associations. There's the Haldane Football Association, for example, the Haldane Soccer Association, the Basketball Association, and others that have their own accounts that are maintained, I'll say, by their respective officers. And let me preface all of this, and I should have started this way, that I think that all of this activity is very well-intentioned, that they're on the part of our parents, on the part of our coaches, to engage in, at times, fundraising activities to further support their program. And I want to start by saying, you know, I have a respect for that. I believe Mr. Salem and the board have a respect for that as well. What's important is for this to be done in a manner, in an appropriate manner, in a transparent manner, in accordance with the board's previous discussions regarding this, and potentially the board and the administration's previous actions regarding how this should be facilitated, so as not to raise any questions or concerns on the part of other community members, internal or external, with respect to how money is accounted for. So when we have an additional layer beyond the Blue Devil Booster Club that could potentially be engaging in fundraising activity, it merits at least a conversation to make sure that it's all being done in accordance with how the district desires, if the Haldane name is being used. I would say we're still looking into this. It's going to take some time. I do believe that, and I'm questioning, when Dr. Bowers had worked on the fundraising policy back in 2017, and the board had, I believe the intention was to pull these accounts back into the Blue Devil Booster Club and the oversight of the Blue Devil Booster Club. I see some nods of heads at the table. Again, this is just very fluid, so we're still working on this. And I can say with confidence that those accounts were not all pulled back into the oversight of the Blue Devil Booster Club, which, again, may raise some concerns. So I made a note there that the administration's continuing to examine the scope of the accounts that are set up outside of the Blue Devil Booster Club to decide whatever action or corrective action maybe need to be taken there, and our intention is to work hand-in-hand with these associations to make sure that we're doing this in a way that's transparent, that's respectful of the work that they've put into previous fundraising activities, and that's respectful also, though, of the board's wishes and previous discussion that's occurred about this, or these matters, several years ago. Just a side note, any team that's engaging in fundraising activity, the agreement appears to be that 10% of the proceeds are given back to the Booster Club, and the team keeps the remaining funds. That's kind of an ancillary note to the bank account structure, but it may have answered a question or two that came up tonight. So a couple of layers to this. Obviously, there's the layer, or the issue, specific to football, which I know has gotten a lot of attention, but as we're continuing to look into this, we are also realizing that there perhaps are other matters that need to be investigated or looked into. And Chris and I, and potentially Ms. Dineo, will be spending time on that in the coming weeks to make sure that we're respecting the board's wishes from two years ago, which I assume is still the board's wishes now. I don't believe, oh, I do have just a couple other notes that I want to speak to, and then we'll open it up for questions from the board. It raises, I don't think this matter, you know, is specific to sports or athletics. I think we have a lot of fundraising that goes on across our school community, again, with very good intentions to support programs for our kids. Another layer of this is examining too, what's the value and the approval process of donated services to the district? We have volunteers or people who donate their time and their energy into working on the school play, for example. That is a donation, you know? A person may have an expertise in a particular area and lend that expertise to something like the drama production. Well, we have to examine that. Should there be a process for equating a value to that and having it approved by the board? We very well may need to. I had someone approach me recently who was interested in donating a service to an area behind our school to maintain a James Pond. Well, again, there's a value to that that we may have to look into. How would the board go about approving that donation of their time and potentially equipment? I also want to note that as I read the board policy that was worked on a couple of years ago, as I read it, the intention of the policy seems to limit the scope of fundraising activities that we're engaging in, which is well-intentioned. We're not a fundraising institution, and there's lots of particulars that have to be accounted for when we are fundraising. Again, it's going to happen. We want to make sure it happens the right way, but the intention should be to limit its scope and to look to our budgeting process for funding the programs in their entirety as best possible. So if our football team or the drama production, whatever it may be, feels that they need X amount of dollars to provide, to provide resources to our kids, to provide equipment to our kids, to provide our kids with the experience that we want them to have through those, through those experiences, or through those teams or extracurricular activities, we should first look to our budget process to see how can we account for this in the school budget? And where we can't account for it, what other mechanisms are there potentially to get our kids what they need? But I want to try to also reorient our community, perhaps Dr. Bowers did as well, to looking through the regular budget process as a means of funding our programs so they don't have to fundraise. But, you know, we'll work on that over time. So that's the last of my comments. I'm sure we'll have questions, and we'll go from there, so.
So board, have any, go ahead, questions, comments?
Can you, can you talk about, so, the difference between a fundraising activity that is sponsored by, blessed, approved by the school, which facilities are used, and strictly a donation? Somebody says, "I want to give you $5,000." So are there different approval processes for this, and how do they?
Ultimately, they all should culminate in approval by the board. So regardless, so the two scenarios you just provided, if it's a fundraising activity that's sponsored by one of our 501(c)(3) organizations, which I think is relevant, there's an approval process for that activity to take place. I think what we've realized is that not, whatever the fundraising is, whatever, if equipment's being purchased, if money's being provided to the school as an extension of that, it should make its way up to the board to have final approval by the Board of Education for whatever came from that fundraising activity.
Came?
Correct.
After the fact?
So typically fundraising, let me give you an example, and maybe this, and I want to get to the second part of your question, too, so don't let me forget that. If our, one of our sports associations fundraised for a specific, fundraised and it had administrative approval, often that leads to the purchase of something.
Yes.
So let's just say it's equipment. At that point, Mr. Salem would handle the approval of the fundraiser, because that's done on an administrative level, ideally in accordance with board policy, and then whatever's purchased with it, again, if it's equipment, would be then donated to the school, and the board would approve that donation. The monetary donation that you mentioned, there's probably some particulars to a monetary donation. I'll, I'll turn to Ann on that. If it was a lump sum of money, it can happen, but again, that would require board approval to accept that donation of money from an individual or from an institution of any kind. I don't know if there's any other particulars, Ann, if there was just a lump sum donation to the school.
No, that's the easy one.
That would be, yeah.
So does the policy, I remember receiving this when I was on the school foundation.
Sure.
And that was a couple of years ago. Does the policy currently route everything up to the board for approval ahead of time?
No.
Okay. Do you think it's the intent that it does or should?
Yes. I think administratively, it's a best practice.
Okay.
That anything that we're purchasing through fundraising dollars, especially, we can, there might be other board policy that establishes a certain level, anything above and beyond a certain level, should be approved by the board.
Yes.
But what John was just asking was, you don't want the board approving a fundraising raise or prior to it happening?
Not prior to, no.
It's after it happens.
No. The administration should be approving it. I think you'd get bogged down, and it would unnecessarily delay if we were waiting for board approval. The administration should have a good understanding of what the board's policy is, what the board's desire is, approve it, and then when ultimately anything's purchased with that money, that now becomes the reason the board would approve it, because now...
You're accepting it.
You're accepting it. It's now district property.
Right.
And we have to account for it.
Right.
So that's what, that's part of the board approval process.
You also brought up bank accounts. Is that particular to bank accounts that have the Haldane name attached to it?
Yes.
Okay. So the Haldane School Foundation, probably the Haldane Arts Alliance are all in that bucket?
I believe so.
Okay. So what needs to happen?
No, is there 501(c)(3)'s?
Yeah. So they're recognized 501(c)(3)'s.
Oh, okay.
So I don't think there's any issues with the School Foundation's accounts or the Arts Alliance accounts, and I've sat in on their meetings, so I'm pretty attuned to their record-keeping processes and their accounting procedures.
Yep.
So I believe they're in accordance with what they need to be doing as a 501(c)(3) to maintain that status, and then also, you know, the manner in which funding from those organizations comes into the school, I think is fairly well-established and documented through donations that you act upon. So my assumption, while we should be reviewing everything right now, is that those entities are operating in accordance with what policy outlines and just good accounting procedures outline as best practice.
So...
I can't say that for, I don't know, for some of the others.
Okay. So it's, if you have Haldane in your name of your bank account, you need to be a recognized 501(c)(3).
Sure.
Okay. And that we have some insight and transparency as to your...
Right.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that the respective sports associations do not.
Right.
Some of those sports associations were established prior to our Booster Club.
Right.
So, you know, it's important to recognize that.
Sure.
They've been in longer standing than some of the, than the Booster Club itself. That being said, have they maintained, and again, there's several, their 50, a separate 501(c)(3) status?
Right.
Or are they operating those accounts under the 501(c)(3) status of the Booster Club? And if that's so, there's issues there.
So just to clarify, the board's role, we don't really have much of a role in the actual fundraising process. Our role is when, after the fundraising is over and the money is being donated, or the, well, specifically fundraising, with, when the money is being donated, the board's job is to approve it, or not approve it. But the board isn't part of the approval process of a fundraiser. That's strictly with the administration.
That's correct. The only other caveat I would say is the board establishes any applicable policy, which it have, regarding fundraising, that the administration would use in working with any 501(c)(3), parent group, whatever it may be, teachers who want to fundraise, to make sure that we're guiding those individuals in the appropriate way that's respectful of the board's policy.
You also mentioned a little bit about services, and I'm curious to know if there's a policy in, in place about how do you value those services or what kind of services we're talking about?
No policy, but we would have to do some work there to establish what that would look like.
Right.
I just think it brings into question donated or purchased services probably isn't the right term, because that has connotations on the business end, but services that are being donated to the district.
Right.
And I use the example with drama. I know that, that can occur.
But that doesn't fall under the volunteer policy, because...
It may.
It...
It's just something that we're looking into to make sure that all of that activity is happening in a way that, that's appropriate. I'm not quite, you know, we're at a point right now where I think we're questioning, we're not...
Right.
The intention is not to question everything, but we should, just to make sure that we don't have to keep coming back to this with every fundraising activity that's going on. We want to provide good guidance to our groups that are engaging in fundraising activity or individuals who are volunteering their service to a particular group that's looking to support our kids in some club, activity, extracurricular, whatever that may be.
Margaret and I worked extensively with Dr. Bowers to draft this policy, and it was really tricky to get to, because we wanted, I mean, you know, just for what it's worth, some of the activities that triggered the board, considering this policy, had nothing to do with sports and, or even any particular extracurricular activity. It was just there were a lot of fundraising activities, and we wanted to develop a policy that could be as fair and as comprehensive as possible. And, you know, one of the things we did consider, and Margaret should correct me if I'm wrong, was requiring that all these different organizations be 501(c)(3)'s, because one of the things that we really wanted to make sure of was that when money was being raised on behalf of the district name, right, by invoking the Haldane name, that best organizational and financial practices were being implemented. But then we realized that that would place an undue burden on so many of the groups that really want to make a contribution to the district, which was how we got to the point of making sure that if an individual or a group raised, they raised, engaged in a fundraiser, they did so under the auspices or under the guidance of, or were somehow really attached to one of these 501(c)(3) groups.
Right.
And, yeah.
And I think that's, just upon review, that was appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, that, that's the right way to do it, and it, I just don't know if right now it's occurring in that manner across the board. I think as I talk to Mr. Salem and our administrators, we may need to tighten that up.
Right. And I guess one other thing, and I, because I haven't heard these words mentioned very much, and it was so much of what motivated drafting this policy, rewriting this policy, rewriting this policy again, multiple conversations. I mean, this is not, this is something that the board did talk about repeatedly over the course of at least an academic year, if not longer, but one of the goals was really to make sure that all fundraising activities and sort of what's done with that money is, results in equitable outcomes for students, right? Not that every student would get like the same share...
Sure.
...of what's raised by a particular group, but really wanting to make sure that, well, I mean, and I also think what, what you stated at, at the very beginning, but that, you know, the district's mission is, is to educate students and to provide all of our students with high, you know, equitable access to high-quality experiences. And so that really was the intent of, of the policy. Yeah, I mean, and we worked really hard on it.
I think another thing, and I don't see it here, but I remember talking about it, Peggy. I think they were going to put in the application, and this is kind of in the weeds, that what are they fundraising for?
Right.
And that was supposed to be part of it. So they weren't intended to be just generic, "Oh, we just need money for the soccer association or the baseball association," or whatever. "We want this because we are going to purchase X."
Yes.
Right. And is that on the application?
What's the purpose of fundraising activities and how funds will be used, but I, but I don't know how that's typically addressed by applicants.
Correct. So in the last page, just so everyone's aware of what Margaret is referring to, on the last page of the fundraising policy, so this is the sheet, the stapled sheets, including the memorandum from Dr. Bowers. You'll see the purpose of the fundraising activity, how funds will be used. There's a space for that for our teachers, for our coaches to fill out. That outlines that. And that also allows the administration to remain attuned to what the needs are. Again, the spirit, and more often than not, sometimes we engage in fundraising just because it's what we've always done, but there may not need to, we may not need to continue it depending on what's listed there, or may allow our administrators to become more attuned to what the needs are so they could budget for it in future years. So again, the spirit of the policy, as I read it, and I think it's, it's wise, is to limit the scope of fundraising activities that are occurring.
Because the district wants to be in the position to be providing for all of our students, and I mean, and I think, you know, I think it's important to point out that one of the reasons why the policy states that fundraising activities have to be approved by a building principal or superintendent is because we did want to be sure that the fundraising activities met these educational, met these, met, meet these educational goals, right?
Right.
And, which is certainly what we do when we develop the board's, the district's budget.
Right. And the one thing that I've always stood on is, this is a public school, and under no circumstances do I ever want a child or a parent to say, "My kid can't play swords because they can't afford it." Ever. Ever.
Something else I just want to point out is that when we implemented this policy in 2017, right away, we started kind of a new protocol with the Haldane School Foundation, and we've been receiving their fundraising efforts to approve, but we've never received fundraising efforts to approve from the PTA or the Blue Devils Booster Club. And I don't know where that system broke down, I guess, and I'm just kind of wondering aloud, it's, you know, so the board puts in a policy, but then where's like the reinforcement? Like who's, I don't know whose job that is. I don't know, I don't know why it's taken till 2019 for us to say, "Oh, wait, this isn't in compliance. What's, what's going on?"
Right.
You know?
It's the administration's responsibility, so I'll be clear about that, that we have a responsibility at the building and district level, those of us who, who are in roles where we would see fundraising come across our desk respectively or be in a position to monitor it, to make sure that it's being done in accordance with board policy and any applicable law or regulation. Sometimes situations come up that are unique, that maybe we don't think necessarily would apply, or we learn through, you know, dealing with an issue, but I think, you know, to answer your question, it all needs to, it's the administration's responsibility to monitor.
I have two more questions.
Yep.
Because I do. Something, one other thing that came up in the, the law that was cited, that was, that said, "Nothing in this park shall be construed as prohibiting commercial sponsorship of school activities."
Yes.
What does that mean?
Sponsorship's a different thing. Yeah. You have to get into that. I spoke with Mr. Lambert about that. So sponsorship would be, this is the classic example from years ago, where a soda company sponsors your scoreboard or has their, their label on the scoreboard.
Yeah.
And I'm pretty sure that's why that's still in there, because if you go around in high school gymnasiums across the state, you'll see, you'll see scoreboards with the big soda company label still by the side of it. So sponsorship is different than, and unique in terms of how the regulation is listed. As I reviewed this with Mr. Lambert, including the details associated with the football fundraiser, I just want to make sure, we felt that this certainly came under scrutiny for the commercial promotional activity...
Right.
...element of the regulation.
Okay. Okay. And the other...
And the advertising as well, which is not getting a lot of attention, but is highly relevant in this matter. And again, I included the advertising, the advertising regulation as well, so.
I think it's, I agree with you. I think it's totally relevant. As someone who does a little bit of marketing and knows a little bit about sponsorship side and a little bit about the marketing side, I would never want to see, I would never want to see a company be able to monetize, to use a term of art, any of the information of our students, our parents or anything in a particular way without approval and oversight. But, so last question for me. So this is obviously a crappy situation that we got into and there are a lot of people here because it was a crappy situation and we find ourselves here and we're obviously having a good conversation about what the policy should say, what should we do going forward. And so I, rest assured that we'll figure out, we'll sort our way through it. How did we, was there something that we could have done to prevent us from getting where we are?
Sure. Yeah, there's a few things depending on where, you know, where the starting point is. I think back when you have a board of education work so deliberately on a policy and as I've come to understand the fundraising policy, and I think some have alluded to that being worked on over the course of several months, if I heard correctly, that carries a lot of weight. And then it's contingent upon the administration at that point to likely take the couple of months it's going to need to make sure that the policies being, that the policy's understood, that the necessary parties, it's not, and this isn't a criticism, you know, you can't just send a memo out, I'm not saying that happened, that's part of it, but making sure that each of the administrators who serve as liaisons to these organizations are sitting down with the leadership of these organizations to go through it, to examine how, what the implications are in their current work, et cetera, on down to make sure that anything that happens from that point forward is in accordance with the board's wishes. And so I think that's something we likely need to do now. I don't think that happened to the extent that it should have back in 2017. And, you know, that's our work right now, is to sit down with each group, make sure that if they're following the procedures, that great, please continue to do so. But if we feel they're not, that we, they understand what the process is and why and that, you know, we're working with them and providing them with the appropriate level of support to come in accordance with what the board wishes and what the policy outlines and other policies. I think there's other applicable policies here that are relevant, just so people are aware of it, but they may not necessarily influence their specific fundraising activities or accounting procedures, but they should just be aware of because we've now learned from it. So I think if we were to just start back from a couple of years ago, that's what, it didn't quite go that far, but it, we need to now.
I guess the other thing I would say, so that's, the administration, the district need to take on the responsibility of making sure that everybody's aligned with a policy and continues to know what's going on. There are probably a couple of other ones like that that are not fundraising specific. What can we do to help community members who are interested in supporting the school understand processes and what we will do and what we won't do?
Well, I think if it comes to any donation of any kind, I think in this case I'd ask, this is one of the few times I'll say, have them call me. But I think it's something that, there's a lot of, a lot of potential issues if it's not done correctly. And the last thing we want is someone or a group who is donating their time or wants to make a donation to the school to not facilitate that process in the appropriate manner. It can create hard feelings, can interfere with future work with the school district or service to the school district, so we don't want to see that happen. Again, I think everybody who is involved in one of our associations or one of our respective groups that support the schools, whether it be a 501(c)(3) or other, is there for the right reasons. So we don't want to lose them in the process. And over time, I would say, as our administrative team continues to learn about what is acceptable, what's not acceptable, I think any community member who's interested could reach out to any administrator and have the appropriate guidance provided. I just think we're still sitting with it right now because there's a lot of nuance that we want to make sure we get right. And obviously, we're going back to a time from two years ago, which isn't always the easiest thing to do, to make sure we're really capturing the spirit of what the board's desires are.
Thank you.
Well, I'm also embarrassed that I, who worked on this policy, didn't think to sort of like notice that we weren't getting, it wasn't until, you know, in, you know, I, anyway, but I think, yeah, I mean, I think the one thing I, and I think John probably said it better than I will, is to make sure it continues to be communicated that the district values so much, all the time and effort that folks put into. I'm a little concerned that we even brought up this issue of volunteering because I actually do want to put it in a really separate space. I think, I'm sure it needs to be considered, but like when you think of like all the parents who just spend, maybe things have changed since my son was in school, but like all the hours that Chris and I spent, like, you know, in the classroom and, you know, helping with different, you know, events, that could be hard. And we want to make sure to frame this as a way of figuring out how to, how to integrate all these really, all this positive sentiment and all the warmth and fondness and affection that people have for the district and make sure that it's integrated well. And that might be hard, given that this issue has risen around a controversial topic. So we'll just need to keep communicating that.
And I just want to clarify, you know, someone who comes in and volunteers in our school, they want to, in a classroom for the day.
That's not what you meant.
No, no. I'm talking about something like, and I don't want to mislead by using this as an example. It's just the example that comes to mind. Martha finds an expert in set design who wants to volunteer their services in developing the set for the upcoming production. You know, that's one I have to, and they're an expert in that area. It's something I think we have to examine. They're spending hours of time on a very particular project that has real value to it and very well maybe leaving the district with something, right, that their kids are using afterwards. Situations such as that where the scope of that volunteerism is so, so wide, so far-reaching in terms of the particular project that they're working on. That's one I want to make sure that we're examining, does that count as a donation to the school? And that's one, you know, I've referred to our attorneys just for guidance on.
Sure, okay, got it.
So I have one more question. So when this is all done, we don't always, I'm sorry, the fundraising sheet that's supposed to be filled out.
Yep.
When this is all done, completed, it's not always going to come back to us for every bake sale, every whatever. So we didn't really drop the ball. It would only come back if it was brought to our attention. Every single one of these isn't going to come back to us.
But if it's over, if there's a donation over a hundred dollars, which over the past couple of years, I assume there's been several of those.
I just want to clarify.
That's what the board, that's where the board will take action. We're not going to look at these fundraising approval forms ever.
You're going to take action with what is purchased through the fundraising activity?
Right.
That's where you would take action?
Right. And I guess knowing that there is so much fundraising activity, I realized, well, we're not ever seeing any, we're not, we're never, we're never presented with approving, that I can remember, any donations other than the foundation.
Chris, you probably, you probably know the answer to this is, so what was purchased that was of more than a hundred dollar value that would have come to us?
I'll give you a, I've got a question. So in this scenario, technically, nothing. I think you're, I think you're getting a little confused. If you get a piece of equipment or money donated over a hundred dollars, that's where the board would approve it. If it's just a regular fundraiser, the administration approves it. And then if something is purchased with that fundraiser money, the administration would present it to the board to approve that item that was purchased.
Right. So we've approved those things.
Correct. Not every fundraiser goes to the board. You're just approving a piece of equipment or money, an actual donation over a hundred dollars in value. That's how I interpret it.
Sure. Just to clarify, upon our initial review, we believe that there are things that have been purchased over the last two years that have not been presented to the board for approval. I want to be clear about that. I don't want an email the next day, what about this? You know, we have community members here. Over the previous two years, there very well may have been things that have been purchased that have not come to the board for approval.
That were purchased with fundraiser dollars through this, through this process?
Correct.
Doesn't matter. It could be somebody, back to the, I have five thousand dollars, I want to buy you a land yacht. It doesn't matter how I got the money, that should still come before that donation.
As long as it's going to end up being Haldane School property.
Yes.
Because it's now our property.
The Board of Ed, so the Board of Ed approves the gift, the contribution. The administration approves the fundraiser upfront.
Correct. And I'm not saying the board dropped the ball on that, I'm just saying we haven't presented it to you for approval. And I want to clarify too, the bake sale example, many of those bake sales, because I see a lot of those, those are run by student activity groups. So there's a separate process through student activity funds that have to be, that they have to account for, that are audited by our auditors each year. So I just want to, because again, this is far-reaching, so we're talking a lot about kind of the athletics end of this tonight. I'm trying to broaden it out to the other 501(c)(3)'s, just to first perspective. But I also don't want to confuse it with student activity funds, which there's a whole separate series, extracurricular or extra-classroom activity funds. A whole different set of rules and regulations regarding those. Our auditors, it's part of our external audit each year and internal.
You get a, you know, you get a separate audit report for that. You get separate financial statements. But I also want to remind you that each month you approve the central treasury report and there are revenues and expenditures for each club on that. And embedded in that treasurer's report are fundraising activities under revenues and their purchases and under expenditures. So that's all in there. So those activities are approved by the board, not in such detail that you're seeing, you know, how many cupcakes were sold, but it's all under there and the underlying documentation is audited each year with the district's financial statements. So, and I know that over the course of the last couple of years, there's been equipment donations and, you know, from whether it be the Booster Club or the PTA. And I have copies of those because I just had the audit and I had to show those to the auditors that the board accepted. So there were some things accepted. I don't want you to think that, you know, you haven't seen any of it, but there, I believe there are some things. But in general, those club accounts, you do approve.
Yeah, I mean, the PTA fundraises all the time, donates, you know, a thousand dollars to the elementary farm-to-table program, you know, donates here, there and everywhere. And those are things that we should be approving.
Right. That we're not.
Yes.
I have one final technical question. I noticed that the law said the boards of education or their agents. Who are the agents of the board of education?
You're looking at the regulation?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My initial reaction is it's us.
The district, anybody in the, okay.
Yep. That's how I would interpret that, but it's a legal question, so I can ask if you want me to, but I'm pretty sure I would be an agent of the board. Because I, you provide or grant the superintendent with the authority to enter into agreements. Now, more often than not, you're resolving to allow me to do so as they come up. So as part of reorg and whatnot, so I'm pretty sure that's what that applies to. So that's why I brought up the language with this particular fundraiser. Third-party fundraising sales document, which it sounds like we're working our way towards an agreement of some sort that, you know, red flag, you know, we can't have individual entities or members of the association engage in contracts outside of the scope or approval of the board.
Thank you.
I feel like there are people here that are here specifically to hear about, talk about, share about the fundraising activity. I might be wrong. But I'm wondering if I can, if you guys don't mind, I'll just skip to the communication from the public and then go back just so in case anybody had anything they wanted to share. So I'm going to go to the communication from the public section and before anybody communicates, I'll just read the process. "The Haldane Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. For those who wish to address the board, please sign in and state your name for the record. Please keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Disparaging remarks and discussion of district personnel are prohibited. Although we do not engage in dialogue, we are listening. Please leave your contact information with our district clerk, Ms. Julia Famularo, for prompt follow-up from the board president or superintendent." So if anybody would like to speak, the sign-in sheet is just telling Ms. Famularo who you are and coming to the microphone.
Good evening, Mary Ellen Yanatelli. Here on behalf of myself, and I just want to state for anybody that knows me pretty much knows that I love everyone indiscriminately. I do not speak for, represent, nor have I taken any action on behalf of the Haldane Football Association, the Blue Devils Booster Club, or any official school club, group or organization. What I did and do, I do independently. I want to make that very clear as I know for a fact that there is concern that if I am connected to any of these groups, some people who have trouble separating may malign them because of my actions. In the weeks leading up to it, I was really looking forward to the homecoming game, wearing my late son Anthony's jersey and pin and jacket and screaming, "Go Blue", as I did back in the day till I was hoarse. Then I read something on Facebook about the cancellation of the fundraiser and was so crushed that I decided not to go at all. The more I learned about how and why the fundraiser was canceled, the more it upset me. I expressed my outrage on social media and some even non-Haldane friends offered to donate money to the association if I'd go get Chick-fil-A and bring the sandwiches to the game. I got in touch with Melissa, she picked up the sandwiches and I distributed them at the game in exchange for donations to the association. I did not force anybody to take the chicken sandwiches. I did no advertising, no announcing, and all seventy-five sandwiches were gone before the third play of the game. I packed up, gave the money into the concession and went back to get Chick-fil-A sandwiches because I had distributed the ones that were even supposed to be for the football team. In this age of information that we find ourselves, some people with agendas seem to prefer ignorance, if that suits their narrative. It is common knowledge that nearly a decade ago Chick-fil-A stopped participating in the same-sex marriage debate and have publicly stated, "We have no policy of discrimination against any group and we do not have a political or social agenda." All of the protests, boycotts and demeaning of Chick-fil-A were essentially successful, which one would think would be celebrated. They changed. The proof is out there too. Chick-fil-A's tax return documents are publicly accessible and detail all of the many worthy charities that they donate to. Most are, all are for underprivileged children, something I would think would be universally applauded. Despite this proof, some people still can't let it go and I think that's pretty sad. For students, the takeaway lessons about this whole thing, I think are, if your viewpoint differs from somebody else, shut them down. If you, even if you changed your mind on an issue nearly a decade later, it can still be held against you. If you held a viewpoint and people badgered you for it and as a result, you altered that viewpoint or your actions, there is no redemption, no forgiveness. You will pay for it for the rest of your life. What is that teaching students? What is that teaching students? How could they ever really want to get behind a cause? Because they have a potential for lifelong repercussions. Or perhaps they choose to live in total apathy about everything, because honestly, why bother? If this is the best that we can do, then we fail them, and that's a tragedy. I appreciate all the comments and information tonight, and I have to take a packet. You know, I understand that this board is under a lot of pressure from the public and everyone else, but, you know, if you're going to get nitpicky about Chick-fil-A, what about Google? What about Chromebooks? You talk about monetizing, you know, Google is known for that. All these have admitted censorship of information and donate to causes that I find objectionable. I hope the school will respond to my concerns as quickly as was done for the Chick-fil-A parent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public speaking is not my forte, so bear with me. I'm Chris Erwin, I'm Haldean Football Association President. You know, I had every intention of coming here tonight and sitting and listening, but I feel like I need to voice my opinion. Everyone knows why our fundraiser was canceled, and it was not to do with fundraising. If it was not for the employee of the district parent complaining about Chick-fil-A, we would not be here discussing fundraising. It was canceled because an employee of the district, a parent, did not approve of their political issues, and that is why our fundraiser was canceled. You know it, and I know it. It's just concerning to me, especially that an employee of the district would approach one of our members to discuss this before they would even go to the administration to raise concern about it. I also want to just explain that fundraising is such an important part of our association. I have to say that Coach McConville is probably one of the hardest-working coaches I know. He does a lot of the fundraising himself. I'm sorry. All the money that we fundraise goes back into the program. Coach is always working on researching new equipment to replace with some of the ancient equipment that we have here. It's safety for the children is the priority here. I just wanted to tell you some of the stuff that we have bought with our fundraising. Not that anybody's going to know what any of this is, but lev sled, trap shoe, RB blaster, tackling rings, agility pads, dog sled, sled vests, squat racks, bumper plates, dip-and-rise shields. We do have grants from the Blue Devil Booster Club that has helped us. Like I said, all our fundraising goes back into the program. It goes to the weight room. We use our fundraising for the homecoming game, senior night, reduces the cost of our year-end dinner, senior gifts, graduation scholarship. If a child cannot afford to attend camp, we'll pay for that. I don't know, I think we've saved the school a lot of money with all our fundraising. So, not sure if the school would want to fund all the stuff that we have bought. And Chick-fil-A, regardless of what their political issues are, it's a fundraiser in many schools around the world. In New York, I know schools that do Chick-fil-A fundraising, and it's very successful. One of the things, when we went through, we went through all the steps, and that's one of the things that's concerning to Coach McConville, I have to say. When we fundraise, we go through all the guidelines, we go through all the paperwork. It was approved. Two days before our fundraiser, it was canceled. Not because of fundraising issue, that was not the issue. And I don't really know if you know, when you go to a place to eat, do you know what their political issue is? I don't, I don't really care. If I don't want to eat something, I won't eat it. We weren't forcing anyone to eat a chicken sandwich. It's pretty bizarre that we're talking about a chicken sandwich, but that's what we're talking about. And I'm going to just add this one note, I had lesbian, gay, transgender friends come up to us in support of us, they wanted chicken sandwich. I mean, we didn't do this Chick-fil-A fundraiser to offend anybody, we did it to make money for our program. We're not going out on vacations, Coach has not put an addition on his house with this money. It goes back into the program, and that's what we were trying to do.
Thank you.
Celia, do we need to move the microphone? Can you hear people?
A little closer.
But we need to move the microphone out so that people can get to it, because otherwise the comments aren't being recorded. Thanks.
My name is Melissa Castro Santos, and unfortunately, I didn't write anything, and I'm not a very good speaker, but I speak from my heart. And I just want to say that it was very disappointing in having our children hurt in this way, because they were looking so much forward to having chicken sandwiches. My son came in and asked, "Mom, we're having Chick-fil-A, could you please make sure you get me sandwich?" My son placed so hard on the team. My children are very strong kids, and I teach them to be strong. But I try to give them everything that they can while I'm here. So, my thing was, I was just very upset that the school allowed someone to come in and hurt our children. I love every single one of these kids' sons like my own. So when I heard they weren't going to get their sandwiches because a couple of people said something, come on, when are we going to stop this separation, this segregation? We are all regular people, we're all God's children. You have to forgive. God wants us to love and forgive and to take care of each other. You were supposed to take care of our children, and you didn't. Do you understand that? And that hurt me from the bottom of my heart. So I said, "I'm going to go out and make sure the boys got their sandwiches." But God's blessing, Mary Ellen stepped up, she took care of the boys, and it was like so touching. So I said, "I'm going to get Michaela's team." I can't afford to get every team that was playing that day, if I could, I would. Every kid on that, in every sport that was being played that day would have got their chicken if I could have, but I can't. But it was successful, the children got their sandwiches, they were happy at the end of the day. But my thing is, you've got to understand, everybody has their own opinion, and everybody's opinion matters. We have to learn how to forgive, we have to learn how to reach out and help each other. We can't just sweep things under the rug, because that's what it sounds like you guys are actually doing. It doesn't sound like you're going to actually accomplish anything, because you even admitted that, you know, I don't know your exact words, because my mind is really bad, I have chemo brain, but that it's so much work for you, and, you know, you have to get this under control. They are the kindest of the heart, just gave, gave us something for our kids, why couldn't we just accept it with love, like they were trying to show? We just have to stop hurting each other. And all this mumble, jumbo wording and all this stuff just has to stop. I know that there's a lot of different fundraisers, different versions and stuff, whatever you guys, I don't, I'm too stupid to learn all that stuff, but I understand there's a lot, but get it right. And just accept somebody's kindness, because you stopped Chick-fil-A, but then you went and said you're going to get empanadas from Juanita, which is fine, the kids loved her empanadas, but that's not originally what they were happy about, they were happy about Chick-fil-A. I mean, you don't know everybody that you're dealing with, and like, I think Mary Ellen said, and Chrissy said, you don't know their affiliations, but you have to learn to let go and let love, and just stop the hurting, that's all I want. And I believe the children deserve an apology in allowing somebody to come into our school and hurt them. I don't know if I got it all, but that's all I want to say. But thank you for all that you do, I know it's a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public?
So, when the decision came down, and you guys decided to pull the plug, we were all confused. I have friends, this does become a political issue, because that's how this town rolls. Let's call a spade a spade, you got, you know, two different sides. So, I have a lot of friends that their children are gay and trans and all that, so they don't go to Chick-fil-A. I never went to a Chick-fil-A, didn't know about Chick-fil-A, they versed me on it. I said, "Oh, okay, so it's an evangelical family, okay." I get that, because I have evangelicals on my side of the family, my grandfather was an evangelical minister. I didn't go that route, I went my own route, which is really nothing right now, but my point is, is that I've always accepted people for who they, who they are. And I thought, we're a public school, so that's what I thought we'd do in the kindest way. So, we didn't know what Chick-fil-A was, some of us did, some of us didn't, but I, I thought, well, hey, maybe this is a good time for the school to approach the kids that are in the LBGTQ club, get their advisor, and be like, "Hey, guys, this is what we've been waiting for, an opportunity to, you know, do a sweet protest here, they're serving Chick-fil-A, let's write something up, we'll set up a table." I don't know, maybe it's a bad idea, but they could have used that to educate everybody. I didn't know what Chick-fil-A, you know, I didn't know any of that. Anyway, I just thought, maybe, maybe the administrative system could have done something else, because they have a voice also, right? And then, they're going to be going to college soon, so how are we preparing them? This is small potatoes, wait until they get out in the real world, we're in a little bubble here in Cold Spring. So when they get out, it's, you know, it's a lot meaner than right now. So, I don't know, just things to think about, I don't know, everyone's a little emotional about it, but I think moving forward, we should open up our minds, and, you know, never did we ever think we were going to be hurting other children, that was never a thought in Mr. McConville's mind, or our dean here, Mr. Solomon, or any of these ladies, me, none of us. So, intention is really important, you always got to go circle back around to intention. So, anyway, hopefully, we'll learn from this, we have some work to do, everybody does. You guys, we do, okay? So, I just want to leave it on a nicer note, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to move back into the regular portion of our meeting.
I'll pick it up.
So we're picking it back up at facilities and enrollment.
Sure, just before, I know folks tend to scatter, and our new process doesn't, or establishes a desire not to engage in discussion, but I appreciate everyone's comments this evening, and I can anticipate that, thank you ma'am, that I will be in touch with those who have commented this evening, and I see they're on their way out, so I'll be in touch. Just a note for the board, that we did have individuals from Western Suffolk Bosys on campus yesterday, I'm sorry, last week, to discuss our facilities with our building administrators. This included a walkthrough of the entirety of the facility, they discussed information that the building administrators had provided to them about programs that are running in the school, potential issues with the facilities that they encounter on a day-to-day basis as part of what they will include, excuse me, in their facilities and enrollment study, so that work continues to move along. And lastly, we had our first full-day session with Jonathan Costa from at Advance last week, the Strategic Coherence Planning Team. I'm pleased to see, I didn't check today, but as of this weekend, we had approximately 160 individuals who participated in the thought exchange, which Jonathan thought was great, I thought was great as well. Our coherence planning team was working with that information throughout the course of the day last week, and will meet again in about a month or so, I think, a little over a month from now, to continue their coherence planning. There will be a second, a second thought exchange engagement to come later this month, if not early November, now that we're in October, so the community should look out for that. I was pleased, the PCNR and the current, both were able to include the invitation to participate in the thought exchange in their latest issue, so that first one will remain open, I believe, until the end of this week, and then the second thought exchange will open again later this month or early in November, so work is proceeding along with that work as well. And that concludes my remarks.
Can I ask two questions?
Sure.
Sorry, actually, it's sort of a multi-part question. What is BEDS Day? Do you know what it stands for?
Yeah.
What does it stand for?
Basic Educational Data Survey, about the S.
Something, something.
Yeah.
Have we had it, when does it happen?
I think it's this week.
It's this week?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just going to ask, do we know what our enrollment is for this year?
I don't have the exact number, but I'm happy to provide it to you. I know we had a bit of an increase in enrollment, in particular in ninth grade.
Okay.
Towards the end of the summer, a number of new registrants.
Okay, alright.
So, let me get that information for you. You had asked what BEDS Day is, I didn't-
Is it informal, like, this is your, this is what everything's based off of?
Correct. So, we establish as a BEDS Day, your staffing, your enrollment, and a lot of data behind all of that.
Okay.
So, number of teachers you have at each grade level, et cetera, et cetera, enrollment at each grade level, demographic data, et cetera, and that's used as the basis for a variety of things at a state level, everything from school accountability to human resource functions and whatnot, throughout the course of the school year and in subsequent years.
Okay, cool. And other thing, on the strategic coherence plan.
Yeah.
I fill that form?
Thank you.
It was great. It was actually, it was actually really interesting.
Yeah.
It was very interesting, because it takes a while, like, to go through all 200x.
I didn't have to do that.
No, but I think that's really, because you see, you start to see, you really start to see patterns.
Clear patterns.
There's some clear patterns. Do you have a goal for tranche one of how many people you want? So I'm assuming for the second piece, they're going to clear, and they're going to start again?
It'll be a different question.
Okay, okay. So for the first section, do you, are you shooting for something, for an amount of participation?
Jonathan, we rely on Jonathan's expertise with this, but I think you're, you experienced what happens. After a certain point, you start to hear, you start to see which ideas are becoming somewhat repetitive.
Yeah.
And perhaps rising to the top. So, Jonathan felt that our participation now was, was very good on the first question, that it would be, and he could explain the particulars behind it, or perhaps Peggy could in terms of representative samples, but that it would hold up, if you will, as a representation of the community's feelings about that particular question. So the skills and attributes associated with the ideal, with a profile of a graduate.
Yeah.
And I think you can see that inherent in the, in the platform of the thoughts that are rising to the top, so it's pretty apparent to me that critical thinking and problem-solving skills are something that our community feels is really important for our graduates. You know, the others perhaps not as clear, but that one certainly stands out.
Cool, thank you.
The way it works in the, in the small group, the- The way it works in the, um, in the small group, the, we were asked the same question, uh, skills and attributes and, and also, uh, belief systems. But we spent the day trying to come up with what the, the small group felt like were the top skills and attributes and beliefs that we thought, and then we compared it-
Yeah.
-to the thought exchange information that we had had in so far-
Yes.
-um, and used it collaboratively with the thought exchange.
Both ways, yeah.
Yeah. And then the next step for the small group is to determine, um, how well the school is currently doing in these areas. And I think that's the next question that the public gets asked as well-
Sure.
-which will be something similar. So the small group and the public are, are, they're working, um, in tandem.
Okay.
Um, they're collaborating without really being in the same room.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
So actually, I am gonna comment on the number question, quite honestly. So a certain number is not gonna make it representative. What's representative is if there's some representation from all the different groups. And these kinds of processes by their design aren't representative unless we're doing things like the, the newspaper articles, which I think, I mean, advertisements which I think are super important to get it out into the community. But I wonder if the next time around, like, next time there's a thought exchange, if, if the administration wants to... If there, is there a possibility there are particular segments of the, of the district population that we think may not be likely to respond to an opportunity like that and to make a special effort to reach out to them? So that's actually what you do when you want a representative sample. You sort of figure out, well, who do we really wanna hear from? And you then make extra-special efforts to hear from the people who might be, who you wanna hear from but are maybe least likely to apply.
Yeah.
So that's just a thought. And I'm sorry to throw it out like that, but-
So one of the reflections from the first group, um, in exchange was that we didn't have a number of students, uh, participate.
Wow, that's a great point.
And we didn't really, uh, direct it towards the students, I don't think, uh, in how it was advertised or being promoted, uh, internally or externally. Was it necessarily being geared for students to complete it? Um, we'll leave that there. Uh, but when, as Jen mentioned, uh, let's just say we're sitting with critical thinking and, uh, problem-solving as one of those skills that we want every student to walk away with. Um, the next question will be, where is the school system? What are the activities and experiences that you have that support that? And, and where are we, where's the potential for opportunity there? Where are we not getting that right? We certainly want our students to weigh in on that, right? They're, in, in particular, our upperclassmen. Uh, so we talked about how we could target, um, our upperclassmen to participate in the thought exchange, uh, considering that they're at the end of their experience and towards the end, they would have that perspective now, um, as compared to a kindergartner, obviously, uh, um, to provide feedback to the system, uh, on how we are doing that well, or where we are doing that well, or where we're not doing that well. Um, so, uh, I think it speaks to Peggy's point.
You should bring back deer. Drop everything and respond.
Drop everything and respond. Funny. Uh, we may have to do that. Um, but as you can see, the, it doesn't take much to participate, so five to 10 minutes on our students' part, uh, will go a long way, I think, in terms of, uh, adding perspective.
We even talked about setting up, um, stations, like, I don't think it happened during curriculum night, but other op-
Dr. Silke.
Dr. Silke did it, yeah. Um, certain places that we know a lot of parents will be congregating, you know, maybe the school concerts or, you know, what have you. And, um, setting up stations and encouraging people.
Right.
And did you find that, I, I've heard reporting that people have gone through and not actually added their own comments, but just have gone on to rate comments. So this is the sum total of people who have participated, not only people that have made comments, but also people who have been thumbs-upping, thumbs-downing.
I believe so, yes. I, it's a technical question. I'm just going off of what I see as total, uh, participants. Uh, um, the extent of their participation, I don't, uh, I'd have to ask Jonathan about that.
Um, okay. Uh, committee minutes, the technology committee minutes are there?
Actually, can I just go comment?
Go ahead.
I thought those were such good minutes. I felt like I wasn't able to attend that meeting. I don't know who took those minutes. But, you know, just because technology has been this topic that the board has wanted more information about, and I read those minutes, and, um, I felt like I came away with so much information about what was happening, um, related to technology. And so it was, I, I was really, I was so appreciative.
And it reminded us how Edgitech will be, um, you know, is here now five days a week, and it made me think, I'd really love to hear about how that went at some point. I assume you'll be keeping us abreast during budget time, talking about if that's something we wanna continue or not, if it's worth it. So I'm kind of assuming it's a budget conversation.
Well, part, uh, just remember, it's also a workshop topic for this year, technology updates, so that'd be a good time to include that.
So maybe then, yep, yep.
I was just excited to see that you're thinking about ransomware. And, because like, that just freaks me out, right? Uh, maybe not as critical for a school for the day-to-day, uh, but, but I just think that-
It's actually-
We are reading a lot about it coming up as issues for schools.
Yeah, sure, sure.
And I'll tell you, it's insidious. You see these emails that get the appearance of legitimate, uh, communication, uh, from someone else in the district that, you know, you just notice the subtlety that, oh, this isn't it, uh, or this isn't good. So some districts have really got caught up with that.
They test, they test it. They do, they do, they tested it MasterCard, and I got one that was in theory from my boss that said for my expense voucher. I was like, oh, crap, clicked on it, total, total like you got caught.
It's problematic.
Uh, the, oh, we're back at communication with the public. I think we're, I think we're good with that. Um, information reports are here for, um, anybody's review. And then we go to consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? These are for our September 17th workshop meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Um, I of course need to point out the retirement of, uh, Ms. Linda Dearborn, who has been here for forty-three years.
Wow.
Um, a real, uh, contribution to our school district. She will be sorely missed. Uh, I'm, I'm sure she's shying away from any sort of retirement vetting, but, um, we'll have to come up with something to do for her. She's, um, been a real asset to the whole school, but the board interacts with Linda, uh, quite regularly. Um, so we've all gotten a chance to work with her. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unfinished business, the approval of the Board of Education workshop topics. Um, I think, uh, we went through these in detail last meeting, so we should be good to approve them. Um, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do you want me to read the resolution?
Yeah.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the workshop topics for 2019, 2020 as presented below.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I just ask if it, is it possible on the school calendar to put the topic of the workshop and the person who would be presenting?
That school calendar is very little, but I don't, I don't know. Is there room, like, online?
Yeah, online.
On the website.
Click on the thing.
Oh, on the website, on the, on the Board of Education page?
Yeah, I'm sorry, on the website.
Yes, I think so. Wait, I, well-
On the Board of Ed Page, on the-
There's a school calendar.
The school calendar.
On the, there's a link off the homepage for the school, for the district calendar.
You're talking about on the homepage?
Yes. Just because I think it might, some people might be interested, that's one of the things I tried to talk up at the middle school, is like, we have these workshops and people come to present what the heck's going on. So even if you, like, come and hear, but that might encourage people to say, "Oh, I really wanna hear what's happening with technology at the district." So they might come.
Yeah, or this one.
Yeah.
A little more description.
Just a little bit more information.
All more information, okay.
Yeah.
I'll send that to Megan.
We'll, we'll-
Thank you, Julia. Julia, yeah, Megan or Jessie or somebody.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, okay, new business, the approval of the CSE/CPSE placement recommendations, Ms. Famularo?
Okay, sorry. Uh, yes. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, okay, we have, uh, here just for review, it's the amend, this is, we were talking about adjusting the, uh, board agenda format, adding in, uh, board reflections and closing remarks at the end. Uh, upon discussing that, Ms. Famularo reminded us we need to update a policy if we wanna do that. Thank you, Ms. Famularo. And, um, Dr. Benante pulls our current policy, which if you look at it, you can see we are way far away from what the current policy tells us to do. So we've been making some shifts, I guess, throughout the years without adjusting the policy. So, um, in an effort to clean that up, um, this is the current policy as it, as it lives. Um, and now we need to make adjustments, or is the policy committee gonna do that?
Yeah, so it really should go through the policy committee unless you wanna discuss it as a full board. Uh, I would recommend it go through the committee just because it's more, uh, efficient that way-
Yeah.
-and that the committee come back and present something to the board, uh, for action. So it does take a couple of meetings, uh, depending on when the committee meets, to, to make a change in the meeting format. Uh, but we should be doing it that way if, uh, if you'd like. Although, as you noted, we're, the current format is different than what the policy is, so, um-
Right. But we might as well follow, follow the rules.
The only thing I would notice on the agenda, it says this is the first reading. This is not the first reading of the, of the, of the new policy.
No, I, you know, I, I made that change later because I wasn't sure if that was what was happening at this meeting tonight, so, sorry about that.
So this is just a discussion.
Linda has been out, as, um, trying to keep the board, so sometimes in between, as, uh, because Linda and I initially drafted the agenda together, I think that just may have got lost in translation. Uh, I didn't know if it was a default tab, uh, in Board Docs. I just assumed that's why it was showing up that way.
Sorry, it was my mistake.
No, no reading tonight. Uh, just, it is there for discussion.
It's just for our information. You see what the current policy has, the policy committee will meet and then will present with the, to the board, a, uh, more updated version of the policy, and then we'll have a chance to approve it or not. Um, okay, so the next item is the superintendent's evaluation timeline. I think I'll turn this over to Peggy to share with us.
Right. Yes. Um, so I went to the trouble of sort of writing out in some detail what our process would be. It's, last year was the first year that I led the evaluation process, and I think I was kind of figuring it out. Um, but this year, I met with Phil and we, we talked through what we thought the timeline would be because it didn't get, I didn't meet with Phil until Friday afternoon. This didn't get posted to Board Docs until today, and so that's why you didn't, you have a printed copy of it and why I just wanted to walk through it. So, um, the timeline is really guided by what we have to do and by when it needs to be, by when everything needs to happen. And so this is just a proposed timeline that, um, after the December 3rd meeting, all the board members would go into executive session to discuss and identify any topics we would like to, to bring up with Phil during our informal mid-year evaluation. That would then happen on December 17th. Um, and then for, in terms of the end-of-the-year evaluation, on April 21st, uh, Phil would present his materials to the board, the written self-evaluation with the evidence, supporting evidence. And this, this actually, this approach follows more what NISBA recommends and differs from what we did last year. So instead of us meeting and then getting the materials from Phil and then meeting again, we would actually restart with the self, written self-evaluation from Dr. Benante, sorry. Dr. Benante. With the evidence. And then we would meet, uh, then the next thing would be each of us would, on our own, go through the evaluation tool, um, complete the instrument, um, on our own. Um, and, uh, then we'd come together on May 5th to go through both the written documentations that we received from Dr. Benante, as well as to talk through, um, and come up with our official ratings and feedback. And then at that point, it kind of diverges. If things feel really pretty good, we don't see any particular issues or concerns that we wanna discuss with Dr. Benante, at that point, um, we could just take what we write, present it to Dr. Benante, um, uh, at the May 19th meeting for his signature. Because Dr. Benante indicated that he doesn't necessarily, unless we really want to, he doesn't feel the need for us to have an in-person meeting to go over everything. Unless that's something we, I mean, obviously, if that's something we really wanna do, that's definitely something that we can do. So if everything feels good, no big issues, we would present him with our written evaluation, um, uh, on May 19th for his signature. If we do have follow-up questions, other requests for evidence, or things that we'd like to discuss, um, we then still present a written draft of our evaluation to Dr. Benante and then schedule, um, in advance of, in advance of the May 19th meeting, and then schedule an executive session with him on the May 19th. So anyway, I know there's a lot of detail, but we kind of need to approve it, so I, and it's a lot of information, so I wanted to go through it. Um-
So the difference between this year, this and last year is we get the stuff from Dr. Benante first?
Yes. It's actually what NISBA recommends, and if you'll remember, when we met before, we would receive Dr. Benante's materials.
It was hard.
We actually had a lot of questions. We were like, well, I don't really know, like, we sort of needed to wait and, and hear from him.
Right, there was-
So it wasn't, I wouldn't say it was a wasted meeting, but it was a meeting that I don't think was as productive as the meeting that we had once we both had the written evaluation from him, as well as had, had really, you know, gone through everything on our own together.
I will say, though, I did like, I did find it valuable for us to just talk through our, um, impressions-
Before seeing-
Before seeing, uh, Dr. Benante's personal impressions of what happened. It was kind of interesting for us to go through and, um, you know, unbiased-
Right.
-uh, to just flush it out. Um, however, that being said-
You still have the option to do that. You, you have the option to do that as an individual, but may-
Right.
You do have an option to do that as an, as an individual, but that, that is certainly a, a change that we could make. We would then need to move-
I'm not, nah, I'm not advocating for a change. I'm totally cool, uh, giving this, this a try, because this is different than what we've done in the past, and it, I'm sure it's, has its own value. I think you're right. There is that moment when we're all discussing it before we get the supporting evidence, where there are holes. And we're like, well, we don't really know what this is until we hear from him. So, um, this, I, I'm totally game to give this a try. I'm just saying out loud that I did like that element of going through it fresh and then getting the input and seeing, seeing if we were aligned or not. Um, I did kind of like that element of surprise, I guess. Um-
I just wanna make sure.
But I'm, I'm very fine giving this a try.
Actually, I wanna double-check something because I, I wanna make sure April isn't, I wonder if my dates might be slightly, because I was, I put, we put this together just assuming the first and third Monday of the month, but I have a feeling, oh, no, it does, even in, in April.
It's not a break, April's spring break.
No, that's still, that's still good, yeah. Yeah. So I think the only thing is if others on the board, and I, Jen, I know you're not recommending this, but if the board did think that it would be helpful for us to meet once in advance of receiving Dr. Benante's written self-evaluation, we would need to do that on April 7th. That would be the, adding that.
I think, I think we can give this-
A try?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with trying this way. I, I will certainly do proactively on my own, sort of like ruminate for a little bit and then come to, come to, uh, a question, a statement and a question. I would certainly, I think I would value the time to just sit with Dr. Benante at the end and say, "Hey, this is, right?" So I don't know whether, yeah, maybe that's during the executive session on May 19th. I'd throw that out there as a possibility. And the question was, do we care that it basically wraps up before the budget vote?
So that, so, so, so this isn't, these are important issues and these are things we discuss. So one of the things that would hap- May 19th is, so May 19th is the bu-
It's like a landmark moment in the school district calendar?
So, there, so there's two issues that I want to bring up. One is May 19th is the budget vote.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so it would even really be hard, I mean, not impossible, but having an executive session that night could be difficult. So one of the things we begin to run into, right, we have this June 1st deadline that's in Dr. Benante's contract. So one of the things we then begin to run into is if we did really think that that was definitely an executive session that we wanted to have, we have two options. One would be to have it on a different night, to meet on a non-board night. The other would be just begin to push everything up even earlier, which seems, starts to be insane, because you're so early in the year. And then your second comment about the budget, personally, I feel like the evaluation, I don't feel like, for me personally, considering Dr. Benante's performance, does not hinge on whether or not the budget passes. I think the factors that influence whether or not a budget passes, passes are multiple and various, and whether or not the budget passes, I don't think is important. How we get to the, the budget, the budget process, I think, is really important. And so most of the budget process will have happened by the time we do that. So those are my thinking about those, 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 those two things. But again...
I think having an exact session on May 19th actually would be quite easy, because we tend to meet later anyway.
Okay.
So sneaking one in a little earlier, starting at 7:00 would actually, I think, be pretty possible.
Sure.
If we decided we wanted to do that. It might not be something we decide till later...
Yeah.
...as we're going through the process. I also don't love that we're setting up our agenda, our evaluation is done by May 5th. Is that, am I reading this right? We're done by May 5th, and we hand it to Dr. Benante to review. And that is a solid, you know, two weeks before the budget vote. And although whether the budget passes or not is certainly not something to evaluate a superintendent on, the way the budget is communicated is. And even though the budget will be set at some point before then, in April 20-something, I'm sure is like our vote to say, yes, this is the budget, then the superintendent goes out on the road and sells it and communicates it to the public for, you know, hardcore for four weeks. So we'd be assessing him...
On May 5th.
On May, as, as, you know, providing assessment on May 5th before his budget communication parade is actually completed.
Budget.
And although I actually have total faith in Dr. Benante's budget presentation skills, you know, if we're looking at this as something, as a template...
Right.
...for the future, I don't, I don't know that I would always say that.
So...
So again, I'm okay trying it this year, given the circumstances, but I do think it's something for us to kind of pay attention to as we're, as we're going through it.
Well, I think one thing I might do in the future is not agree to the June 1st being done by date. That might be where I would start personally, but I don't think I realize that at the time. I mean, the other option is always for us to not necessarily meet, have an executive session on the night that we have board meetings.
I think we were, as Peggy and I were talking through this, we were trying to avoid the scheduling of an additional meeting in between, which is still an option if we realize when we're in it that if the board needs to do that, and that would be helpful, we can, but we're trying to be respectful of the regular meeting schedule, I guess, in keeping on that schedule. But it does, it being somewhat of a, an iterative process, like, there's a couple exchanges that ends up expanding this out to, you know, April 21st, you know, to meet a June 1st deadline. So...
I think something else we have to do...
I don't mind, obviously, I don't mind trying it. Peggy and I worked on this, so...
Yeah, I'm, I'm very fine trying it. I just think we need to be aware of some of the things that we're bringing up.
Right.
I think we also have to be aware that we'll be doing a self-evaluation, I assume, congruently, like, I assume we'll be doing it side by side.
So it might be that, well, that, we know that, that there's not going to be, we know for a fact that we will never fit in both in a single executive session. It would be my guess. And so it may be, it may be that we can't get away without adding an, an additional meeting in the month of May. And if we were to do that, then, why don't you all actually, after, how about after the training on the board self-evaluation? We revisit that, and if, and if we need to, we could then add that into a date.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy.
Can I just ask one question about the dates? You mentioned April 7th. We do not have a meeting on that date. We have a meeting on April 14th.
I looked up April 7th too, because that's spring break.
Yes.
Okay, so that was actually, that's, I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, no, thanks very much. We're not planning to meet on April 7th, and I didn't have my calendar open in front of me, but we are meeting on April 21st.
Yes.
Again, now that's the month where we meet, like, the 14th and then the 21st. Right. So that, that would be the thing that we would have to change, to push it a little bit earlier.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, and in terms of sort of definitely having a meeting, and this is something we can revisit, right? I think, you know, definitely having a meeting with Dr. Benante when we're presenting our written evaluation, again, it was Dr. Benante's suggestion or, or possibility that we, that not be amended, you know, we not, we don't necessarily have to have that meeting. I wondered, if we didn't need that meeting, I wanted to respect his time, knowing how busy he is that time of the year, and if we didn't need a meeting, and what we, really what we wanted to do was express our satisfaction, thanks, gratitude, which I think is what mostly happened last year. We didn't necessarily need to put another meeting on the schedule to do that. But that's not to suggest in any way that if the board feels like we want to have that meeting, no matter what the contents of that meeting is, that that would be a problem.
Okay. So we'll keep it open.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peggy. Do we need to vote on this?
No.
We're just, we're just going to do it?
I don't think so.
We don't need to vote on it or anything, right?
No, but I did think last year we went into it sort of not really, having a, a plan. And I, especially, because I don't think we had done a mid-year, even an informal mid-year evaluation with Dr. Bowers previously, and so when that came up upon us this last year, I, I don't think we were as ready for it as, as I wish we had been.
I agree.
So this will be at some point where I say, does the board have any, after the communication for the public where there isn't, unless Mr. Solomon, do you have anything you'd like to share? I would say, are there any board reflections? I'd like to wish Sean McNaula happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
It is, it's my birthday. If you add up 1 through 9, you'll know exactly how old I am. Add them all up, that's right. I know, it's okay. I've had so much cake today, so I appreciate it.
And then I'd see if Dr. Benante had any closing remarks.
I just, I did want to acknowledge Mrs. Dearborn's retirement, and Linda, I'd be remiss if I didn't. Linda has been so instrumental in helping me make a, I think, a very positive and smooth transition into the district over the last year, which it's a transition that continues, you know, you know, I continue to learn new things from Linda. I don't think, I don't think you mentioned this, Jen, Linda has worked for 14 superintendents, so there are...
The confidential secretary for 14 superintendents.
14 different individuals. And let me tell you something, I never questioned that confidential piece once with Linda. She embodies that, an incredible sense of loyalty to the district and to her service to the district. And with serving 14 superintendents, or 13 other superintendents, you know, there's things Linda has picked up on that work and works and does not work. And she's been very helpful in sharing some of those things with me, you know, in this community, in this context, as I've transitioned in here. I'm going to miss her terribly. I think I speak for us all when I say that, in her presence in the district office. And yeah, hopefully, the next month brings opportunity for us to celebrate Linda in a way that she will allow us to celebrate her, because she is someone, as you know, who does not want any recognition, but I, and I know that's important to her, but we're looking forward to having an opportunity here in the coming weeks. And I've talked to Jen a little bit about this, date and time to be determined, both for the board, if they so desire, and members of our community to extend their appreciation to her, for her service. And as you know, Linda's spending a lot of time with her family right now, rightfully so. So, you know, her family and she continued to be in our thoughts and in our prayers, and hopefully, we find the space in the coming weeks again to, to celebrate her and her service. So more to come on Linda, but I just wanted to comment on that. And I didn't want my comments before, I think they may have been cut off as folks were leaving the room, but, you know, when we have a, an issue in a community that parents feel compelled to speak out about, as, as the public comment statement, I think, states or outlines, either the board president or I will be in touch with the individuals who have spoken today. I certainly have no issue doing so, some of whom I've already been in touch with, so you can anticipate that I'll be in touch with those families. And I meant what I said at the, at the beginning, that prefaced all of this with the fact that we have a lot of folks who want to commit their time and energy to supporting our kids, to supporting our programs. We want to get that right. It's not to interfere with their inclination to support our schools. So we want to make sure we're respectful of that, but at the same time respectful of the board's wishes and any policy or other matter that may influence a decision. So we'll look to establish that in the coming weeks with respective groups of individuals. So with that, those are my comments, again.
Off agenda closing remarks. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. May I, may I have a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.